Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the CFP Committee on September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at thirty P M. And the first item on our agenda is present to speak. So anybody? Nick, do you want to say something?
I already said it on Facebook. It's about Nick Tell, forty number. I'm just disappointed with the money that went to the pickleball. I think I know it's a drop in the in the pocket. I just think it that small mouth could have gone somewhere else. I know the other side to it, but.
It hasn't gone yet.
Okay.
It goes back down if it hasn't.
If it hasn't, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Thank you. Ralph has his hand up online.
Oh, how observant of you. Thank you. Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. I want to speak as Vice Chairman of the Emergency Services Facilities Building Committee. We just got a preliminary quote on the second remediation of the mold in Station thirteen. Uh, it's a bit of a staggering number. And it does not include the prep work necessary before they can start the remediation process, uh, which is namely removing all the electrical and mechanical stuff off the walls and roof. That tab is somewhere north of seventy thousand. My suggestion to the board or to the Capitol Improvements Committee is to start looking for uh, and and redirecting funds so that we can have a building to put our apparatus in this winter. If we do not, we will be in a poor position to provide the kind of services that the town of Arlington has become accustomed to. So a- any nugget that you have squirreled away that is not likely to get spent in this fiscal year, um, particularly if it relates to the fire departments, that that money needs to be redirected so that we can do something uh, to at least get us in a working capacity until such time that the committee finishes its charge. Uh, and I welcome any questions that you all might have. Uh, when we have an RFP out on the street for the station location study, uh, those bids, those proposals are due on the nineteenth. Uh, we have a meeting the following week in the committee will, and we will learn exactly what that scope is going to consist of and what it's going to cost us. Uh, and then decisions have to be made. Uh, we can do what we can if we want to do some things to help dry out that building so that we don't get a another replay of the mold infestation. Uh, that also will cost some money. So please look at what you have in the plan, and let's see how we can redirect funds to get this off of the current state. Uh, and that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
This is present to speak, but we do allow some trouble.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, Ralph, do you have any ballpark for the prep work that would lead you to that abatement? Um, you know, ballpark costs related to that prep work yet?
Um, Alex is chasing a quotes from a local electrician to see what that part of it's going to take. I don't know, um, whether or not that's going to encompass the uh, the heating elements that are suspended from the roof or not. But hopefully by our next meeting, we will know have a more firm number for everything. Uh, but I don't have it at the moment. I think Troy has worked up some numbers for some temporary drainage for the downspouts. Uh, I don't know where I haven't talked with him recently, so I don't know where he's at with that.
I think we're gonna be able to use some uh home facilities and town equipment to do some of that work, and so it's come out of you know, we did, we're already paying for the hours for the workers and we already bought it, uh, excavators.
So he might need some more drain material.
Yeah.
Ripper.
So from from what I understand right now, we're looking at the the current drain uh, may cost us around twelve hundred dollars to get that jetted out. And uh probably around twenty thousand to put in new drainage to make sure that it stays draining because it doesn't look like the engineering was ideal.
Changes over time.
Yeah, I mean, well, no, no, it didn't. You they they like to have the curtain drain separate from the downspout drains and it wasn't, and they were suggesting a eight inch to ten inch pipe and they're using a four inch pipe, so it's it's, you know.
Um, that mold remediation route, um, the scope will work there. We're stripping that building interior lining, interior insulation, any equipment suspended from structure that gets in the way of that removal being removed, so it's gonna be left with the bare shell that'll then be cleaned.
Uh, I I I don't know all of the intimate details on exactly what Service Master will be doing and what will be expected of us to arrange for, um, like the electrician, they're not gonna touch the electrical. Uh, but you know, that's gotta come off so that they can do a thorough job at remediation. So I I I don't know all of the details yet.
Understood.
I just have a question of, I guess, maybe more process than anything else, and I just want to make sure I so, um, Mr. Tullis is asking us to consider whatever financial things we can dig up. I don't I'm I don't mean to misquote you. I just don't remember what the phrase that you used on. Is that a board of finance? Conversation?
Yeah, that that's it is, but but they're gonna want to know, well, they might want to know what this committee thinks and what the board's left and thinks about.
I think it all depends on what year the money was originally in and where we're moving it to now. So if it was in this year or previous years, then it's gonna be a board of finance problem to change the where it goes to. I think if it's year two and out, then it's this board that changes it, so.
Well, I mean, we've been reminded on multiple occasions that we're in advisory. I feel like that this is a an actionable thing that it seems to me maybe requires a townwide approach that the boards working together to try and figure out what the best source of finances is, what the process should be, town meeting, et cetera. Um, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. For me, sharing, you know, between departments is a good start. Um, you know, when you're talking about fund transfers prior, you know, in past years that have expended, it becomes a planning need for us potentially down the line of that project, where it's needing to be funded at a later day funding again. Right? You know, so it it works into, it it really does factor into long our immediate and long capital strategy to a degree to a degree as well, whatever decisions made ultimately by selectmen or the finances that.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean,
that pays out.
At our, um, very basic function is once a year, we're supposed to say this is, this is what we think that should happen with with the money next year. Uh, but then it never works out exactly how you think. Never does. Um, but as close to plan as possible, but this is, this is a real that this we didn't know about back in the story, so we didn't plan for this. Um, nobody, nobody knew to to plan for it, so.
We had a lean, we had a very lean expenditure year this year.
Yeah.
Budgeted it out of, um, off budget funding.
Yeah, so I just can't let this go. I just want to make sure that I am like talking about and thinking about the same thing. So this is something that is an immediate need for the town. And if if we have a role in it, that's great. Um, not if, I'm sure we have a role in it somewhere, and if other committees have a role in it also, I don't want to be working in isolation while other people do different things. I feel like this if if there's any project that requires collaboration, it will be this one.
Right.
So I just, I want to make sure it's a targeted, like, uh, not that word, the Ralph, if you have like a way to present it to multiple people or whatever, I don't know.
No, I understand that that you're just advisory. Um, the only reason I'm bringing this up at your meeting tonight is just the simple fact that you folks are most connected to where, um, the the planned expenditures were squirreled away in a a capital improvements plan, um, which helps to accumulate the total dollars that might possibly be transferable by the Ford of Ford of Finance when we have something, uh, much more definitive than what I have at the moment. Um, but the thing is, like you said, this this requires cooperative, um, action on the part of all involved, and nobody should be working in a vacuum on this. And I I'm just trying to set the stage for what's going to come here because it it's going to be, uh, gonna require some tough decisions.
When mold remediated, Ralph, is that building then habitable as is by equipment? Meaning it'll be unisolated, but.
It would be like an equipment form. It would not be a fire apartment.
But you maintain a town.
You're gonna, right. Yeah, yeah, because fire trucks have to stay above freezing.
Yeah, so it'll be cranking heat, we have the many, I'd say the humidification expense, you know. This is, I know, I know, these are all questions. I'm just, I raise them more for the purpose of, again, just collaborating information.
Right.
Um, but it sounds like there's anywhere from a one hundred to two hundred thousand dollar, you know.
Yeah.
Need to some form, not including additional housing for the apartments that. It's it's.
One, one we have not, um, talked about is ARPA. Um, there's potentially gonna be maybe around a hundred thousand dollars. That needs to be decided on by the end of this calendar year. We just don't know the exact amount because we don't know how the projects play or shaking up, but but we're gonna get a lot more clarity by Monday. I hope it's done. I can run her report and tell us and, um, but that's a possibility. That that approval process is totally different. Um, because the ARPA Commission or ARPA Committee.
I can just just say, go spend it, right?
Yeah, well, no, they can't just say they, it needs to have a, um, a hearing. Then they then they can say it. No, it's not, it wouldn't, it would take some time. But, um, yeah, all of it would take a town meeting or hearing, um, in one way or the other, so.
From a logistical perspective, Pete, and you may have more knowledge of this, like, there is supposedly state funding in a couple hundred thousand dollar and allocated that might be accessible as a backup of our first, which is we receive the ability to get this, any of this.
Every, every, every time I I see Tammy, I ask her for money, so.
Yeah. No, but it sounds like four remediations to act there specifically, and it's it's, it it sounds like it would be enough to cover most of this.
Yeah, let's see what we can do.
I I just, you know, it's it's just another factor out there because by drinking with the timing of reallocating any of these funds, it probably not gonna be before that.
Right.
Before town meetings fall, it changes the purpose of.
Right, right.
So.
Um. Uh.
And we.
So, yeah, we're still present to speak.
Can I, can I ask a question of Mr. Marshall? Uh, because you you had questioned what we can use the building for currently? And the last testing that was done, the recommendation from that consultant was that we store absolutely nothing inside that structure until it's remediated for a second time. Uh, because airborne mold spores are going to land on anything we put in there.
I I meant after remediation, Ralph. That's what that, that's what the question was.
Oh, okay.
Is it suitable as is, once you pull everything out of it, the left condition? Is that a functional, you know?
It's functional with respect to storage of equipment, yes. As far as habitation, all the habitable areas are no longer there.
Yep.
Okay. Um, anyone else for present to speak?
Uh, a a question, Nick Tell again, forty number. Of that seventy thousand, I think he had meant if it was seventy meters higher or is that also stopping the water from coming into, or is that just tearing it out because? That's just remediation. This is a subtle one.
Yeah, they, the, uh, stopping the water from coming in, that's the twenty-one
Why would we do that before?
We are playing, we are, that is.
Okay, because we need to stop the water.
Yeah, you need to stop the water first.
Because it's no, okay.
Absolutely, okay.
The mow these stuff, eh?
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to be on the pitch. We we found, oh, by digging, we found a lot about the water we didn't know before this started, so. And when you dig a hole, look in the hole, tell you stuff.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so, well, can we can move on to approval?
Yes, please.
From July?
I will, I will move that we approve the minutes of July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Is there any discussion? Melissa, you know? Anybody have anything? And I just want to thank Lisa. She does a great job.
Yes, yeah, they're great.
Um, all right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Good to hear. Melissa, thank you.
Yeah, Melissa, did you vote yes? All right, you're you're muted, just so you know.
Sorry, yes.
So we can tell all the night. Okay, thanks. All right, so CFP survey to funding requesters. So where we last last left off with this is I was tasked with putting together a draft of a survey that we would be sending out, and I think you all have seen it.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're gonna talk about it, and if there's anything we want to add to it or anything that we want to not ask in it. Um.
Are you talking about the survey, the Google survey, or the other one, or both of those?
The Google, the Google survey.
Um, the only thing that I would like to maybe suggest, if if someone is asking on number five, I'm talking about number five.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it says people city urgent needs that will cost over twenty thousand in the next ten years. I feel like urgent needs means they need it like now. If we say like imminent needs or something like that, that maybe makes folks think a little differently. Um, and if we're making them i- if this is something that, um, people are submitting for their departments, maybe like a remchanel or some kind of whatever loan support they want to enter in there, so we have some
Mm-hmm.
context.
I mean, from my part, survey really reads more aspirational, which doesn't necessarily mean practical for long-term planning purposes. Um, you know, I know the initial draft, we had a gist of facility need. There's, in in some way, I think we feel there needs to be some congruence between the two. Um, I don't know whether this is good to send out in advance just to get them thinking about it. Um, we're gonna talk about facility walkthroughs again, which are, um, you know, there, we know what's, and we saw them last year, it seemed though, multiple times, it it may not to jump the gun, but maybe it's an opportunity to sit down and have dedicated, you know, more than just a tour, but a sit down to try to garner some of that information.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that longer term capital projections can be developed. Um, ultimately.
I think this can be a jumping off point for that. People are willing to do that before the site visits, and then we can use it as kind of a roadmap from there, ideally.
Yeah, the problem is they're not used to doing that.
I agree.
They don't, um, I mean, some boards do, one, the board of that obviously does. The library has gotten better, I think. They they only started talking about this stuff like a year or two ago, so, um, it's just the fire departments, I mean, they had plans, and now that's all on the window now. And so I don't know, I don't know, we're gonna.
Town buildings, I I I've got one or two items that if we're gonna need to be addressed, we just discovered here. And and that would be helpful for that, right, then if I crap, we gotta worry about this much sooner than we expected, or we're unaware of it immediately.
Yeah.
You know, but I just think, but yeah, one day we'd love to have, uh, we'd love to have an athletic complex twenty years, and you know, like, there's, there's gonna be less of a value to that for
Yeah, although
also good to know.
Although, like, the 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 rec field, for example, when that was first conceived, there is a whole plan of what what's what it's gonna be when it's done, and it's not done. Um, this, the pickleball work, we didn't know about a pickleball, but I think the idea was a tennis court back in going back twenty years, but, um, they would have said that twenty years ago, that that's what the vision for it was. Um, and we've, you know, chipped away at it a little bit here and there over the years, but and the same thing, it needs to happen with every every group, if if there's an end stage.
Listen, we've got a list of those missing components, so that.
Um, no, so so what ended up happening is the rec commission, just because they they submit stuff. Um, they started talking about the pickleball when I was still first selection, so it was a long time ago. Um.
Yes, I I matter of fact, they overcame one of the objections I had towards. I I I had my own objections to it.
Yeah, back, yeah, going back like seven or eight years ago.
Yeah.
And so that's a good example of how it kind of evolves over there, but it took them a few years to get it on the plan. Then it took a few years for it to get approved, then and now we're now we're here, which is actually nowhere until it's it's done, so, um, I don't know.
Well, I think the 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 value certainly, even if people don't fill it out or don't like give it the thought that we would like them to give it, it starts the conversation and it helps folks understand, I feel like, the direction that we're kind of looking at, um, and it's not just right now or yesterday or tomorrow, it's like trying to figure out how this year can build on next year and so forth.
Um, right.
And that, to me, seems like a pretty worthwhile conversation.
Right, so as an example of that, the building committee went over the previous three studies. They were all done in nineteen ninety-five. That said, in twenty-five years, you'll need new fire departments, well. They were right, but we didn't, we weren't looking out twenty-five years.
But they've been, they've been talking about it all this time. And asking for it.
And asking.
And we say maybe next year, maybe next year, maybe next year.
And we maybe next year, one too many years for State thirteen, apparently.
I think so.
Well, I think for this, for these documents, that another value I feel like is that it transfers ownership, like, there's not gonna be the same person in charge of a department now that it then in ten years from now, but if there's a transfer leadership or whatever, that's a good conversation. So maybe they have different opinions on what should happen ten years from now, but at least it started, the groundwork has started.
Right.
And it's not personal, it's departmental.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And another example of that just came to mind, um, and I know, I'm glad next year, um, the library has been talking about doing a um, a youth center in the basement. And they haven't come to CFP to ask for money or to be on the radar for for funding for that. I think that they plan on using their own funds. But still, it that's the sort of thing that should be on our list of this this could potentially be coming. Um, and it's just not, so.
It's actively being talked about too. Yeah, we don't have the funds to really go, it's like eighty thousand just to spray the foam, fire foam.
Oh.
And they got like two hundred and forty thousand or something.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a visit to this board and other boards with no money.
Yeah. Right, and then it's a whole vetting of the whole project, um.
So, I mean, this is a great icebreaker, ultimately, um, particularly in the past, uh, facility tours, what do you think? The real benefit will be then facilitating, you know, a more in-depth conversation about what detail is to what those needs are.
Yeah.
Getting more detailed about the existing facility, just library, for example, I know that there are things that are coming up for replacements that we have no idea about. But even just understanding the age of the roof, the type of roof it is. And if we can better start to account for placeholders down the line and do, you know, one for the fire stations, for example, funding all at once is almost impossible in this town, but if you have a outlet that gradually start to account for that year over a year over a longer duration of time, um, it might be rare these things happening. We got reports that says twenty-five years, we're gonna need a new fire station. That's what we did for open space, right? I mean, that was the year for selection is we put away twenty thousand dollars a year or something like that, and then all of a sudden that big space opened up on Mason Road, and we keep raising the purchasing because we have the money in the bag.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, you know, we can, we can argue amongst ourselves for we can go around in circles of whether or not you should do that, whether you should save, uh, or not. There's, there's definitely a school of thought of what is the best way to do it, but at least having, knowing that it's there um, and that, and knowing what our plan is, is um, what we don't have right now, so, um. So, yeah, so you, so you think do you, do you think it's too, the survey itself is just too casual or too, like you're saying, aspirational?
I think I think it needs to be both those things, casual and aspirational, so we get we get more, more information is better, I think, that's generally the way.
I also think it'll be nice because it'll get departments that we haven't heard from.
Right, right.
Ever, or
Right.
at least not in recent history, um, that you don't think about these things.
The senior center is another one. Um, we, we heard from them a lot going back ten years ago, they wanted a van, and they got a van. Then the van broke, and one another ran. We haven't heard much since then, but they've had total changes of leadership. Um, it's, they're just thinking about things differently, but still, the building's just sitting there, getting older, having new issues, I'm sure, and when, and they don't have funding to fix. They're gonna come here, or they'll at least go to the board finance for it, but it won't be on their, on the list, so.
Pete, when you fill this out for this building.
This building.
Is it a wall we don't talk about, or?
Yeah, well, I just, I wa- I was walking out the door the other day, and there's this little pile of red sand next to the building I went uh, and what caused that, causing that is the bricks are degrading. And they're degrading fast enough that it's degrading faster than the rain can wash it away, which I thought was a little disturbing.
Hmm.
So I I'm starting to get round numbers on what it's gonna take to fix that.
I'll make that on the way out if you don't mind. What?
Show me that on the way out if you don't mind it through.
All right. Um. So, next steps on this.
So the next steps is I will just email it to all of all the people.
Excellent.
And give them a a deadline. I'll offer, also offer to come to their meeting to talk to them about what we're trying to accomplish here, um.
Thank you.
And.
That that sounds like a lot of work.
Well.
I'm not doing.
You do that too, if you don't want to.
Yeah.
Can't, not if you don't.
Right, like, I don't know when their all meetings are gonna be, but we'll, we'll see.
I mean, to that end, give them the survey, um, I'd offer a volunteer to take to be there as well to start to get more detailed information on the building.
Right.
Condition.
Yeah, no, all of us can go, um.
At their meetings would be an ideal place for that, quite frankly, to start a conversation, that somebody who tours and supplement.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at this, that's the, that that's the reason for the next item, which is the the vault facility door. I I don't know. I think everybody who's on the committee was here last year and went to most of the facilities. So I'm not sure that we really need to do that again.
Uh, we never made it, did we make it to the, uh, town hall? The old, the the old town hall or the town hall is 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 John Patton calls it, uh, to to look around there, and the Boy Scout Hall is another one that be, I I came into this job, and because we hadn't toured it, I didn't even know it was a town building. Uh, and, uh, uh, last I looked at it from the exterior, we're gonna have to look at that a little closer. I I had public works cut the roof away from the outside of the building, but now we can see it, then I thought that would be a. I had public works cut the roof away from the outside of the building, but now we can see it, then I thought that would be a nice first step in figuring out what's wrong with it.
Yeah.
I think their building, like. The fire department, I think we know where the fire.
Yeah, the fire departments, I think, like, the, the only thing with the fire departments is right now, Wellington Hill. Is having an issue, uh, their parking lots caving in over the septic system, and so, that's, uh. That's gonna be a, uh, fairly immediate need.
Oh.
There's money in the, in CIP, I just gotta.
Their drive, but is it, is it for that?
It's, yeah, it's, it's in the driveway, and the CIP money is for their driveway.
Yeah. But it wasn't it to, to do, to ask?
No, the aprons was for the other.
Other one, but, but wasn't it to, to do, to asphalt the? Well, I guess that's where the septic is.
Uh. Parking lot replacement is what it's called.
Okay.
Under, uh, CI, approved in CIP twenty-four, twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think they're gonna wanna have, have their CIP money to fix their parking lot, they were kind of. Putting it off to see how long they can put it off, thinking about moving, fixing the parking lot across the street and some other.
Not.
That's, they've got cones up now, so you don't fall in.
And that's been going on for a long time.
Yes, and then there's thirty thousand dollars in, in driveway apron repair for station thirteen, which I, which I would like to use for, for water, uh.
Yeah, I bet.
Because they're not, they don't need to fix their, their apron.
The apartment, um. Wellington Hill, is that, that value, or does that work involve anything related to upgrading septic?
I don't believe so, talking to the chief.
Is it necessary based on how it's?
I'm, I'm gonna talk to the chief some more about it, because we're gonna have to go to, go to fin- board of finance. Ask them for a motion to go to town meeting, so it's. I wish we could get it done in the next two weeks, because I gotta go have another town meeting for region nineteen, so.
So, so what I'm thinking is, when I send out this, this survey to everyone, I will, I can just say, if you have a project that you think. That people haven't seen previously.
Right.
Let us know, and we'll schedule something in the fall to go see it.
Um, is, are we able to? Raise in somehow to be like, uh, collaborating if, if. If we send the surveys out and say, this is a tool for you to use, um. For CIP to collaborate with you as far as your projects, and to talk about. What the years out might look like for your projects, and to invite you to your meetings, um, things like that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I think.
We, 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 we may want to line in there someplace that just because you asked for the money doesn't mean you're getting it totally, I, I, I think there's gotta be a, uh, more. Diplomatic way of saying that. But I, I.
Maybe there's just an intro to this, Christina, but now there is, uh.
Yeah, there is.
That adds a line basically stating. Um. As we.
Priority needs are, are.
As we, yeah.
Needs are, needs will be prior prioritized and.
In accordance with the town budget or something to that effect.
I'm not sure anyone pulled out then, because I'll just say, well, I'm not getting it anyway, so.
Everybody, everybody goes, oh, right, well, if you don't ask for the money, you'll never get it, that's what I hope, I'm learning off the thing.
And that's kind of what I'm doing these surveys as, like, people, I feel like there's a lot of feeling that when people come and ask for money, they're not gonna get it, because we have no money. So, if we give them a survey and ask them to project their needs out over the years, I'd like them to project the needs out, not say, oh, they're not gonna fund anything anyway, so why would I bother?
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
I think, I think the important part of this is follow-up.
Mm-hmm.
Be a part of, a part of his needs instead of ones, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
The whole way, when you send this, or even at the bottom of the survey, I, you know, the capital group, I would like to. Capital group and program committee, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, is interested in discussing future needs and having a better understanding of what we are, these, these, you know. Welcome consideration, uh, good part for discussion when you're future meetings.
Yeah.
Before the budget season ends.
Yeah, yeah, so that's not the time to talk about it. Okay. So, I like that, um. I knew, anything else about the fall schedule? I mean, I, I think, I think we should try to have monthly meetings.
Yep.
Leading up regardless.
Definitely.
And we had said it would be the.
It's nicer to visit buildings before the snow.
Yes, and before it gets dark before thirty.
Yes.
I know.
The fundraiser, our, our, our annual summer reports do state that we already meet monthly, you know, evaluate progress of, of projects.
Yes. Right.
Throughout the year, so I think this is good meeting.
Do, what, did we, I know that this was, did we say we're meeting on the first Wednesday of the month? I know I can't.
Whenever you can share it.
Yeah, I can't do that, because I have, I have to work, usually on the first. Next week it's, this month it got messed up, but, um, my normal schedule, but. If we do it the second Wednesday of the month, it would be October ninth would be the next one. And then November thirteen. Does that sound good?
Sorry, I was in my home. Grandpa said this.
Uh, so, so it'd be the second Wednesday of the month, um. No, uh, October ninth. And then November thirteen. And then December. Eleventh. Those are the times, okay, Melissa, are those good for you? Oh, she's not there.
So December eleventh?
Yes, me, thank you, I was trying to mute.
Okay, and I came through here, um. And then by then, we will start, we'll, we'll know what the budget dates are, so we can, then, that's when we have our monthly meeting, starting after, or weekly, for that. Great, so.
Yeah.
Uh.
Daily. Yeah.
Jumping back to the, briefly to the CIP survey of funding requesters, the, and, uh, the. Equipment inventory of replacements.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Um. Was drafted.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Needs input, like, that would be good to send along directly, well, with that survey.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
To. Uh. Both departments and public works, more so to, to validate. Some of the detail, um, and it, it is based entirely off their information, um, I push it out thirty years, just to be able to get some rolling averages, um. It's. My, I mean.
Yeah.
Quite frankly.
Yeah.
The annual need just to. Maintain the equipment we have without.
Mm-hmm.
Unfinanced, um. Apart from the. Urgent. Facility needs themselves, but, you know, ultimately, I'd love to see it get to a point where we have information about the building, so we can do something similar. Projecting long-term.
Mm-hmm.
And averaging out potential needs, so we have a sense of the problem, you know?
Yeah.
A better sense of the total, um, is it still the way we're ever gonna plan?
Mm-hmm.
Or start to get ahead, um, instead of looking at. The other thing, like about the bonds.
Looking out for your bonds and where money is coming from. This just, uh, we may be ineligible for steep here shortly. Uh, because we have one steep grant out that we're already on a, a. Second extension, so if I can't get it finished, or soon, we're gonna be ineligible for steep. So I've been pushing that real hard, that's the, that's the septic for the, and then there will be enough money left over there to fix a couple of the windows that are broken, so. I'm hoping to get that done and, and out of the way, I, I. Been held up for more than a month and a half on legal. Tolls.
Oh, yeah, and, and what was the thought to use the, the next steep for?
Uh, we don't, I don't even know if we have, I don't think we have a project.
Okay.
But, uh, then we got two million dollars for, uh, Village Hill, and. What's the other one up there?
Scofield.
Scofield. And I had a meeting with the state on that, and there are far fewer fish hooks in that thing than I thought, so.
Is that, is it two million green clear?
Yeah, and we don't, they, they, yeah, the only. Kind of catch is that we have to be legal.
Right.
And, uh.
You have to build to state spec.
I'm.
We just have to bid, uh, uh, in the word openly, is essentially what he said. And we have to turn, we have to have plans, and, and I, so I bet those are just spec, but. If it's a four million dollar project, and we don't have four million, we can spend the two million and get the two million dollars worth of work done, and then worry about the other two million later.
Mm-hmm.
But I.
The two million is an eligible for funding for. Developing plants in specific cases.
Uh, it is, but they suggested that we spent, we, we. Do the plans on our own, so we can use the whole two million towards the other end, and so. Because water runs downhill, I, I'd like to finish the bottom of the hills first, so that when we finish the top, we have someplace to put it.
Yeah.
That's, that's my idea, and we're gonna see what we can get done.
Will it include a bridge, that bridge?
Uh, there, there's gotta be some kind of way to get the, the water from that side over to the river, and that involves. Route thirty-two, so that's state, and I'm, I'm gonna see if I. I, I'd really like to get the state to pay for their, their part of. Project, but I, I don't know if I can do that.
Uh, maybe, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have the funds, funds at all.
No, absolutely not, no.
We'll have to pick up.
But it's better, it's better to, it's better to get some of it started than, than say, eh, never mind.
Oh, yeah, no, it's time, it's time.
So we wish that, it's only been on the plan for thirty years.
And, and that's another thing too, Pete, that if, if you think of any road project that you want the committee or board finance to go look at, like, that might be one.
Oh, you know what, we may wanna look at is holster road, uh.
Around the holster.
Yeah. Google is routing all the trucks from Stafford to, uh, Lox, to holster road. And they can't make the turn, and I just had them take out the guardrail for the seventh time since March.
Yeah.
And so Troy is tired of that, so he's gonna put Jersey barriers in front of them. That way we can figure out at least which truck it is that hit it. The one missing the side. There's, there's already no truck signs from both Wellington and Staffordville.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, Bill Morrison up in Stafford is going absolutely bananas, because his people are screaming at him about that on their end, so.
I mean, I, I know it was something we talked to them about.
Yes.
That is a concern that was raised before they built it.
Yes.
And they said it wasn't gonna be a problem.
Well.
Here we are.
It's a problem. Bill and I started at the same time, so we both walked into it.
I, I, I mean, I, for one, would like to see, I haven't seen that, never been in the boy, you know, the, uh, boy scouts building.
Oh, yeah.
I've never, I, I think I've looked at it from the outside, I've looked at it from the outside.
Um, you know, I, I'd love to focus those earlier on, uh, between these meetings.
The nice thing.
Small meetings like that.
Boy Scout Hall.
Work is a great.
Mm-hmm.
Day.
Thing about the Boy Scout Hall is it's, I think it's a historic building, and has no plumbing, so it, it's, it's a little.
It's a small, uh, easier deal with.
It's basically like, like a accessory building to the Old Town Hall.
Yes.
Like, maybe that's how it has to be.
Yeah.
Looked at.
Uh.
That's being.
Big and senior center.
Yeah.
Right. But we didn't throw those the last.
No.
Two years ever that would be.
No, and in addition to the senior center. The, the pump house for the public wa- water that goes to the senior housing. That. I wanna make sure it's, um, is okay.
This, the septic is not okay, well, it is now, it wasn't, the, it, the septic pump failed. Three months ago, and so we now have a contract to make sure it stays running, because. Once it started backing up, it was really bad.
That's something else that's less than.
And then when it's at the bottom of the hill, now it's just filling back up up the hill, uh, so. That's, that's another contract I've been working on for five months, legal moves real slow.
Yeah, it does. Well, and, and the thing with that is, the town doesn't own the senior housing buildings.
Right.
But we do own the water and the septic system.
Yes.
And we charge them for use.
Yes.
And we overcharge it slightly, and that's, that money is supposed to be going into an account that's for capital expenditures in the future, and for the.
So, what happened is we charged what they were using.
Mm-hmm.
And then the contract is written that we cannot charge them more than thirty thousand dollars a year at this point, and they're using forty thousand dollars a year in services, so the town's picking up the other ten.
Yeah, we can't do that.
We can't, but we can't, until we get the contract changed, we're, we're under contract.
Yeah.
And so. That contract was signed before you were first selected, back when thirty thousand more than come in.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that was for the tax assessment, right, but I'm, I'm talking about, well, like, Donna sends them a, a usage bill.
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm talking about, is the usage bill.
So when does the contract get read?
It's supposed to be redone every five years, but it hasn't been.
Working on it, right?
So I'm working on it.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I wonder, I know what I, I spoke about that, that account a long time, not a long time ago, like, a couple of years ago. And it sounded like they had some tens of thousands of dollars in it, that, because.
All right.
It, it's like every ten years or something, there has to be a big overhaul done on the.
Every five.
Water tanks.
Oh, no, every five years a contract gets redone.
Oh, but I'm saying, like, they had to empty out the water tanks, do this whole cleaning and replacing of things, and it's very expensive.
So.
And are we in compliance?
Yes, we're in compliance with water, I just got an email three days ago saying we're in compliance.
Yeah.
Slide over building was not, was for capital improvements due to the town supply services, not.
Yes.
To the property itself.
Right, right, right. The town, the property itself is, when they, when they start having problems, they don't have anywhere else to turn, so I worry about that too, even though we don't own it, so same thing as the fire department.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, is it the same relationship as the fire department, we're all.
It's, it's not quite the same, because it's managed by the Coventry Housing Authority, so I, I don't know what, what that runs into.
Yeah, and Coventry Housing Authority is gonna say, oh, did you ask the town of Wellington?
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna say. Um, so, but they get, they, they can get, they're eligible for state generals too for things, and they're supposed to be staying in town. So, they do like rent from, from everybody, they're, they're running like a, a small, um. Business, that's not a business though, it's a nonprofit, but, um. We can assume it's being managed properly, but I would, we should assume that they're flush with cash to deal with that.
Assume that there's not.
Yeah.
No, what are the properties? Am I missing that you people have been here longer than I have?
Um.
Would all.
Let's see.
Suggest.
Oh, you know, there's two places, the bus lot.
Yeah.
We've had to, we've had to repave that, um, we've had to do just like basic drain work up there, and we've had to replace the trailer, the work trailer. Uh, and then there's the materials storage facility. Do you know about that place, Pete?
Right behind the bus lot?
Yeah.
Uh, it, the dump?
It's not, it's supposed to be a well-organized.
Oh, it is, oh, it, by all means, it's well organized.
Yeah, that is, um.
For, for, where they dump, uh, logs for the trees that they got rid of and spare, uh.
And re- and, and recycle asphalt, so that's where the millings go, um, but it used to be away from the riverbank. So we had to like build a drainage system so that there's stuff not reaching into the river.
Yeah, the bus lot. I think it was approved from finance last year, right?
The asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah.
I remember, I've gone through a lot, through board of finance.
Yeah, and it was there, it's a big problem, like, to really fix that.
But it's supposed to correct that, that, I, I. And the way it was described is that was correcting that, the deficiency, uh.
The problem, the problem with the deficiencies there is they're exacerbated by the tractor and trailer trucks that take the wrong turn out of the TA and then try to. K turn through the bus lot, and they, the lot isn't rated for the weight of a tractor trailer.
Right, and it's like, it's just self-managing them.
Yes.
Economic Development Committee surveyed this town meeting this Saturday for.
And, and another very expensive place is the transfer station.
I was thinking about that, but I didn't know if that was something that we would, um.
Oh, there's a dream, that's, that's one of my projects coming up on my survey, is, uh, animal control facility.
That's it.
Because our animal control facility will not meet. Current. Current. Uh, Department of Agriculture guidelines within five years, and. Just the upgrades are in the hundred thousand dollar range. And that doesn't include the five thousand dollars worth of wiring for the alarm system that the mice just ate out of the building. And the hazmat remediation for rodent, uh. Defecation and, uh, some other issues.
Everything else I just said five years, we have five years.
Yeah.
Well, but but we, I I've got a plan.
But it's on the list.
I've got a plan, no, for.
Regionalization.
Regionalization.
Yeah.
And and, uh. Uh, town desperately wants to regionalize and they've got a grant that they're writing for a new, brand new facility, because there's been some, isn't up to grade. And so if we can, uh, regionalize with them, it'll probably be not only a savings in. C I P, but, uh, in in.
Operations.
Long, long term operations.
Yeah, we that, we could never get that to work before because. We have two part-time employees.
Yeah.
And we'd have to have one that would then get benefits and. And potentially two people, and then, um, the vehicles and all, it ended up like it was not.
Right now, what we got is one part-time person and a vehicle that wasn't being used, and so. I've, I've remediated the issues with that vehicle and we're running it to keep it running. But, uh.
So that those are.
And and we're not using the building at all right now.
Is that captured by Public Works, that vehicle in there?
Uh.
Unless, I guess.
It's, it's, it's not.
Okay.
No.
It's, it's because there, it, right now, Public Works and, uh, Board of Ed are both sharing it as a.
But the the transfer station, um, there's, there's some. There's drainage, there's.
It's based on our water separation component.
Yeah.
They proposed that last year and I don't.
And that's been, uh, that's been proposed every year for at least ten years.
Yeah.
Basically.
That was proposed.
Yeah, when I was.
At the beginning of your term.
Yeah.
And it's on the list.
Yep.
Somewhere because.
Oh, we we also have the, uh, hazard remediation list from the state that we should start looking at. Um. I think there's thirty-five items on that list that we have to.
On the roads.
No, it's, it's all through town, it it's got all kinds of stuff like, there's a dam that that may be a hazard or. Poses a potential hazard, but we have to sign a document with the state saying that, yes, we're looking into it. And we will do our best. To to remediate these hazards, or if a major storm comes through and we need state aid for hazard remediation. They won't give us anything.
Are these items that are gonna sit more on the operating budget of Public Works or?
No, these are, uh, some of these are are long-term C I P, these, these probably sit out near ten right now.
So I feel like those are things that should go on people's surveys.
Yes. And I need to find that list and.
Separately from that, it was gonna come up again, the, uh, Salcha. With Extraneous Grant Funding, dude.
Extraneous Grant Funding.
Seven months later.
Well, once I get the, once I get the, uh, the septic in, then we can ask for steep money and maybe we can get a salt shed out of steep money.
Yeah, how does that, that's just leftover, what?
Right, Turnpike Road, we had a steep grant to do.
So that's steep grant.
And there was a couple hundred thousand left over because we came, we came in under budget. And they said we could use it. And then I'm, no, I just don't know where it is.
Yes, I don't know where it is either.
Okay. Thank God for Don.
Yeah. Um.
Um, I need the money.
So what do you think for timing of facilities, uh, those for operations, how long?
Um, I would think we could start doing them in in October, so like if I get this, this email out tomorrow and hear back from some of them. I can look at when, when the different groups have their meetings and start trying to map out when that would be.
Target month of October unless.
Yeah.
Work it out.
Yeah.
Just go.
Yep.
Cool.
So. Yeah. But, I think, I think we thought of all the places. Other than that, there's, there's just, well, Burma Road is another one.
Is that the old firm one?
That's the one, so where Ruby Fenton Park is, there's a dirt road that runs up along the side. And it goes to one property at the top of the hill, and that property has a dam. And that dam has has burst in the past and washed out the entire road and did two things, one. Washed out the road, so we had to rebuild the road, and the other thing is it washed all the sand into the, the wetlands that's all protected and. It was a whole thing with T V P and all that, so. You don't want that to happen, and I think that's like one of those hazard mitigation things.
Yeah, it's on your list.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on your list, Pete.
Not true.
But like, that's the sort of thing, like, probably hurt directors should be going up there. Occasionally and checking, and they, the crew goes up there and they clear the brush.
Been up there with the Conservation Commission in the real recent past because they're looking at another piece of open space. Which they're gonna need Burma Road to get in and and do some mitigation in there before we buy the properties.
Thanks for that, you're involved, engineering, webbing, lettering, all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then there's the, there's the other place down, um. What is it? Daleville, yeah. Daleville Road. Where, um, where that, that whole thing washes out all the time, that road.
They fixed it last week.
Okay.
Put in, they, no, they put in actual culverts installed.
Oh.
And rip rap and 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 the neighbors screamed at Troy so bad for fixing their road that he's decided he's never going back there ever again as long as it lives. Can't make the shit up.
No. No, so, okay, well, that's one thing fixed. Okay.
I guess, but we're gonna stay optimistic because we're making progress on data gathering.
Yes, yeah.
Which is, uh, uh, which is gonna be a long journey, but I think it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's the critical need, we're gonna have another year or two of. Arguing about your one urgency and how that would.
It's, it's always, that's always gonna be, but at least we have a a good picture of all of it. And put it all in context. So, okay.
Till later.
All right, um, I guess we can lift the present to speak. Anybody? I'm saying, I'd be.
Good evening, all beautiful individuals on your Sunday crossroad. I want to thank, uh. The board and the Sleitman for working together on finding funding for. I'm all about versus service. Building committee, and we'd like to focus on our charge and. Hey, that issue of our pledge is kind of occupying us because we need to get the trucks into a garage before cell buys, so. You can identify dormant money in C I P or for money, uh, maintenance money in the fire department budgets, um. That would be great, everyone working together, and I think that shows the faith with our community that we're doing that. As far as C I P, I kudos to you for reaching out and getting feedback from all these budget groups and departments. But I would also strongly encourage you to stick to a deadline. In the budget process for all projects being submitted, which always seems to like lag, and it seems to be a drag on our budget process. Because we're waiting, right?
Right.
Um, a- and once, if you stick to a deadline. Then as an advisory group, as Christina aptly pointed out tonight. Prioritize our projects, not be all things to all people, that doesn't work. And communicate with the board of Sleitman, the board of finance on what those priorities are, and I think that would really be good for our community. Thanks. Unless you.
Yeah, I, just a quick question, do you have, you guys have any idea what your? I mean, weather dependent, obviously, but what's your timeframe for needing? A warm, needing that building occupiable.
Yesterday. But, but.
Understanding.
Yeah, I I I obviously, uh, before the cold weather sets in, James. As Pete pointed out, the trucks can't, can't be in a.
They might drop a little freezing, it's driving your block of ice to the fire doesn't do you any good.
And it just. It always irritated me that the fire department had warm trucks and the police department had a cold crew, and they said, we don't care if it's, if it's like a water, it has to be liquid. And they had a point, and I went, oh, okay, I'll just tell them.
And that includes the ambulance.
Yeah.
Uh, two ambulance, so that means one of them is in Stafford, no?
One of them is currently in Stafford, yes. Finally asked, because they could just like. You know, the Stafford.
Yeah, I just wanna remind. Conversing about this, that that gives us time to collaborate also, not just have our discussion about it.
Right.
Dick L. Forty-nine, uh, so if that pick 'em up, all money gets, uh. Turned out, maybe that could go, but it's just one area, um, just. Things here, um, when the survey goes out or such. I think somehow integrating, you know, P O C D or E D C, um, with maybe some of those questions. Uh, is long term, they could integrate. I know in Torrington, when I lived in Torrington, uh, we regionalized on the animal shelter, that split across, so hopefully. An idea, maybe that's gonna happen, and then I know this, maybe, you know, you guys are putting up. Things to stop tractor trailers and throwing ideas out there, these small, other boards, you know, I don't know if you. There can be maybe something device, um, built where at X B it's gonna. Stop attracted or else it's gonna take the top off, right, uh, with proper signage. I mean, bridges do that, road, you know. I've seen plenty of videos.
I I I believe that that idea was at the pause around too.
Um, and so, but, but playing even maybe a nicer way is having something at that height that. When a tractor trailer trips an alarm, a picture of their license plate is taken. And then given a ticket or something sent to. Address that the ticket, the, uh, the plate is registered to, with obsolete signage saying, hey, if you come down here, you're gonna be triggering something, an alarm is gonna.
Yeah, that, that would be a law enforcement function.
I'm fine with that, because that's gonna re- uh, generate revenue.
I'm just kidding.
It it doesn't generate revenue for the town, fortunately, it generates revenue for the state, because that's a law enforcement function. And both us and Stafford are are working through the state police.
They get, you can't, uh, en- enforce any kind of municipality fine? Uh, you can, but it it's, I mean, it's along the lines of ticketing a a car.
Right, but then you have to have an appeals board and it it turns into a huge.
Then take the top off the tractor trailers. I don't know, just an idea, throw it out there, right?
I I, it's, it's, I I understand your thinking on that, because I've gone through that. Whole procedure before, that's why.
And the, and the only problem with that is that when the top comes off of the tractor trailer truck, then our public works and.
Have to go.
Yeah, yeah, potentially, we could charge them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, just like this.
Um, thank you, uh, Ralph, I see your hand up again.
Yes, it is, uh, Ralph Tillis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. I just wanted, on on another note, uh, Saturday afternoon, E D C has an open house over at the library. Uh, with their consultant for a, a plan of development for Wellington. It is primarily a listening session to hear people's thoughts on what kind of development. The residents might find acceptable, uh, I think it's. Uh, a worthwhile event, unfortunately, its timing happens to be the same day as the flea market, but in some respects, that could work well. They go to the flea market, get your chowder, walk around, and then go over to the library and let us know what you think is appropriate development. Uh, I'm not on the E D C, but I am manning a table for that afternoon session over there, so. Anyone who wants to talk about commercial development, I'll listen. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else present to speak? No.
All right, see, what's that?
Yeah.
You good?
All right.
That. I will move to a turn.
Ah, for a second, that interest us?
No. Doesn't matter, please, you're outvoting. I'm leaving. Okay, lock the back door.
Thank you guys very much.